City Council, City Eureka Springs. This will be to address the same issue that you all dealt with back during the regular council meeting of the open carry march on March 29th. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Okay.
Go call.
Okay, go ahead.
Joy Sellar?
Here.
Terry McClung?
Yeah.
Dee Perkypile?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
Nikki Snyder?
Here.
Six zero.
Okay.
I six.
Guess we'll have a public comment first. Same three minutes as before? Regular council meeting rules? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, did you want to limit to people who could not talk Monday?
No.
Okay.
If they're here, they get three minutes.
Okay.
That's only fair. Thank you. All right, looks like we've got three. Start with Peggy Hill.
She lives and set out of her ring?
Yes, it dawned on the latter. Ms. Hill, step up and introduce yourself, please.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just want to be heard. I'm a member of the Sandy Hope Promise. And we're just working to try to get guns to be more respected and people to care more about children and about people in general. We don't care if people own guns, that's not the problem at all. It's about the bullying of it, carrying them around, kind of pushing their way in. And I love this town, I love the piece of it, I moved here because of that. I wouldn't want to have to move away. But if it became the kind of place that was a bullying, mean-spirited kind of a place, I wouldn't stay. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Nancy Fuller?
Nancy Fuller?
Is that your phone?
Nancy, how are you? Yeah, I'll have to lower it for the next person. I appreciate the opportunity to come back today. As I spoke the other night, since the other night's meeting, in fact, there were two incidents, one in the Kansas City area, one in Washington State, that directly pertain to open carry laws. Washington State does have an open carry law. At a roadhouse outside of Spokane, there was a fistfight. A gentleman carrying a sidearm was disarmed. Thankfully, no fatalities. That's the sort of thing that concerns me. I've been a bartender for 26 years. We handle vast amounts of money. We deal with people that have been imbibing, if you will. You may be able to prohibit them from being in your establishment, but you cannot take control of what happens in your stairwells, in your parking lots, and on your streets. That is of great concern to me. As I said previously, I am a full proponent of Second Amendment rights. I like to hunt. I started hunting as a young child with my family. We did it to put meat on our table. But I really feel like the days for open carry were 100 to 150 years ago. We have a very skilled law enforcement department in this town that are far better trained than your waitresses, your average citizens, shopkeepers, and bartenders in learning how to deal with people who are carrying weapons. I really do not feel like Eureka Springs is the kind of place where an individual needs to be carrying a sidearm. Our crime rate does not lend itself to that sort of need to defend oneself. And I am really concerned about the, not only the economic impact that would have on our downtown, but more importantly, the, 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 I can't even think of what I'm trying to say. What it would make it look like. I moved here from Oklahoma City. I left Oklahoma City because of gang violence and things of that nature about five years ago. We don't want Eureka Springs to look like Dodge City. You know, our mayor is not Matt Dillon, and nor should he be. And that is not anybody else's job but law enforcement's. And it is my hope that we will err on the side of caution, really correctly interpret the Attorney General's statement on this, and not leave it open for personal interpretation. And that's all I have.
Chris Young will be the next one. Oh, there you go. Come on up, Chris. Didn't see you.
Turn this down. She's in the water. It was all the way down.
Okay.
I'm Christopher Young, and I appeared last week when we had, or earlier in the week when we had this. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I've found since then on the, let's see, handgunlaw.us, which is one of the references that people go to to find out what can be done and can't be done in a state. And they don't recommend that these people that are in risk in this go out and carry the guns open. Other than that, I wanted to say one more thing here. Arkansas State Police states, when you reach your destination, your journey is over. These people are journeying to Eureka Springs. When they reach their destination, which is Eureka Springs, it really falls in a different classification. When they step out that car, according to this, according to what the state police interpreted to be, they are no longer on their journey. And therefore, they no longer have the ability to carry open without a license, or with a license in my case. So, there is an option that can be used if you so desire to stop them from carrying it into town. They've reached their destination. They say they came to Eureka to do this, so this is their destination. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That'll do for public comments. Floor is open for the table. Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to, an opportunity to hear from our chief of police and our attorney before maybe we get into discussion at the table, if that would be appropriate.
Who's first?
Chief of police or the attorney, I don't care.
Earl's here with his stuff in his hand.
If you're so willing.
Is there any way to turn this heater off?
Yeah, I think so.
He's hot.
I think we've got to turn it up.
We'd have to shut it off probably today.
That'd be a gas, that'd be a switch for the gas valve in the back.
It'll go out in just a while. Earl had to just have to swing a little bit. I'm thinking. Let me start out by saying, this is no surprise to us. None of this is. We knew this law was passing last year. We've watched it go through committee. We watched it go through the House and the Senate. And we watched it when it got signed by the governor. We knew that there were going to be issues over this. I've seen the opinion of the Attorney General. We have ourselves prepared for this law. We've prepared at the police department for what is going to happen. Now, as far as the Attorney General, I've read his opinion, and I've spoken to a lot of different prosecutors and attorneys about that opinion. And the opinion was narrowly given. In other words, it only takes one scope of that law. And that law is actually, the Act 746, or HP 1700, was multifaceted. When the Attorney General rendered the opinion, that opinion was about the journey portion of the law. What we are dealing with in Eureka Springs is not the journey portion of the law, it is a section of the law that got changed that used to say, if you were carrying a weapon, or a handgun, a knife, a dirk, a club, to be used as a weapon, then it was illegal. You could carry a handgun if you were going to and from the range, if you were going hunting, if you were going to go to a sporting event, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But you could not carry it for offensive or defensive purposes, as a general rule, just when you're in your normal daily routine and activity. What changed with 746 is they changed the wording of that. It is no longer, no longer does it say to be used as a weapon. It now says, and let me grab it to make sure that I don't misquote. It now says, "A person commits the offense of carrying a weapon if he or she possesses a handgun, knife, or club on or about his or her person, in a vehicle occupied by him or her, or otherwise readily available for use." And here's where it comes in, "with a purpose to attempt to unlawfully employ the handgun, knife, or club as a weapon against a person." When they changed that statute to this wording, they said that the police and the prosecutors have to prove, have to believe and prove that the person has the intent or the purpose to use the weapon unlawfully. So we have to show criminal intent before we can make an arrest. We have to believe that the person carrying the weapon is carrying it with criminal intent. Also, other research that was done, and I'm not going through a lot of it, but this is from Representative Nate Bell, one of the sponsors of HP 1700, which became Act 746. And in this, and you can look it up, he made a statement back on July the 16th that said, "There have been a lot of questions, media reports, opinions, and other discussion about this act. As a sponsor of the bill, I've decided to share my point with those of you who I represent." And in this, he states very plainly that the intent of the bill, and of those who sponsored it, when it went to committee, and when it went to the vote of the House, and when it went to the vote of the Senate, was to make it to where people could carry openly in the state of Arkansas. He's very, very clear in this. And then again, the Attorney General's opinion, when he signed off on the opinion that was given, that opinion discusses the journey. It did not discuss that one portion, Section 2. Section 1 is about the journey. Section 1 of this act is about the journey. Section 2 was what made it legal to carry if you're not going to commit a crime. Yes, sir.
Chief, what, when you read that, it starts out with something about a vehicle, and that's why I'm kind of confused.
Yes, it starts out without a vehicle. Now-
No, it says with a, it says-
Which part?
That the one you read, that you said is what we're referencing today, is not-
Section 2A.
Yes. It says, "If you've got a weapon readily available to you," and they're covering their bases, "in a vehicle, on your person, or readily available to you."
It just makes reference, it just makes reference to a vehicle, doesn't it? Did I hear that wrong?
Section 2A-
On or about his or her person, in a vehicle occupied by him or her, or otherwise readily available.
In other words, they're saying anywhere where you've got it available, where you have it with you.
Okay, so, I say, it can be any of those things.
Yes, yes.
On or person, or in a vehicle.
They're saying, "If you have a weapon available to you."
Okay. I misunderstood how that was phrased.
Okay.
You spoke about narrow interpretation of the law, and no offense against the senator that you quoted, but that's after the fact. That was after the legislation had taken place. So whether or not he gave his opinion during the legislative process, that that was the intent of the state legislature was to pass open carry, I think you'd probably find a lot of legislatures who would conflict with that senator's opinion.
And they might.
Because it was after the fact. Now, when you go to narrow reading, like you say about the journey, as you start off in Section 1, it gives you classifications for who's allowed to carry a handgun.
Certainly.
And also in Section 2, it reiterates those same classifications. And they're very specific.
Right.
There's about 10 or 11 classes that are allowed to carry a handgun.
Absolutely correct.
So basically, the one word that was inserted into this law, and I question whether or not the legislature was in hold, because there was never any dissent. There was never any criticism, there was never any questions asked by the entire legislature, this sailed through. And I can only speculate on this, but I'm a legislature, and I'm looking at it, it says, "You've got to be law enforcement, you've got to be game and fish, if you're a young store traveling to a shooting competition, you have to be accompanied by," they're very specific in those 10. But by inserting that one word in that law, it threw everything else out. So we're supposed to believe that they inserted that one word, that all of those conditions where you could carry along suddenly don't matter anymore. Suddenly, we're an open carry state. And I know that was not the intent of the legislature. I've talked to Little Rock, I've talked to Fayetteville, I've talked to David Schoen with the municipal league, and what it comes down to is, there's not a prosecutor who wants to stick his neck out on this law. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to say that, but we're stuck with a law whose intent has been misconstrued and mistaken. And unfortunately, you now have this unenviable task of dealing with a group of people that are going to come here on March 29th. Now, my concern in all of this, having spoken to those other cities, was they restricted them to an area, and they restricted them to a time period. This group is just going to go about the city and have the day of it.
Right, and I can address that in just a moment.
Please do.
Okay. Now, let me clarify something real quick. I personally am a strong advocate of all of the Bill of Rights, including the Second Amendment. I'm also a strong advocate of concealed handgun carry. I'm not an advocate of open carry, okay? I just aren't, I'm not. I feel that if you carry concealed, people don't know you have it, you don't alarm anybody. But, the fact of the matter is, that law did get passed with that verbiage. Prosecutors across the state are saying that they're not going to, they don't want to prosecute it, they won't prosecute it. As a matter of fact, my discussion with Mr. Weaver was, if, if, and I'm not going to, but if, I had instructed one of our officers to make an arrest, he would not file the charge in court. But I can't instruct one of our officers to make that arrest, because I place that officer in peril. When I place that officer in peril, and I don't mean peril of his life, I mean peril of civil litigation. I mean that when they do that, and they violate that individual's rights, that officer is in peril. The department is in peril, the city is in peril. And we would lose. It's as simple as that. Because no matter what the intent was when they passed the law, that's what it says. And we don't have a choice on how we treat this. The only thing that we can do at this point is to get the law changed, get it corrected. But we cannot infringe on people's individual rights. Now, I have been in dialogue with this organization, and am going to be in dialogue with them again Wednesday. They're going to come and talk with me. There has been discussion of them reverting to the permit process. So if, if they choose to draw a permit, then we, as the city, can restrict location, time, et cetera. We can place restrictions on that. If they do not choose the permit process, if they choose merely to exercise their First Amendment right to gather on the streets and to walk up and down the street, there is nothing that we can do about that. Now, the individuals who have shops, who own property in this town, can restrict their access to their shops, to their property, et cetera. They may not enter any municipally-owned park, they may not enter the courthouse, the parking lot of the courthouse, the police department, et cetera, et cetera. These people know that. We at the police department had already planned, and already have printed, signs that say, "We do not want firearms, firearms are not permitted inside of this building." And we were, pretty soon, I think next week, going to go and visit with each of the shop owners and their employees up and down Spring Street, Main Street, and talk to them about the law, what their rights are, who they can restrict, who they have to let in, et cetera, et cetera, okay? These people who have the firearms, if they choose to come without the permit process, know their rights, they know the laws, and trust me, they're very well-versed on their civil rights. They won't go into a store with a sign, they will not enter the park, they will not go places where they are prohibited to go. They will be peaceful. There has not been an incident at any of the places that they have gone to since this bill has passed. If they choose the permit process, and they come as a permitted event, then they can be restricted to an area and a timeframe. Does that answer your questions?
I guess council will then have to decide if we want to go that route.
Well, you don't have that option. It's up to them. If they want to have a permitted event-
No, I mean, if they have to go that way.
Right.
To encourage them.
Yeah, well, you know, and we're going to have dialogue about that. We've discussed the permitted event, but I can't make them. We can't, none of us can make them. If they want to show up tomorrow and walk up and down the street with a firearm on their side, they can't. And there's, until the state changes this law, there's nothing that we can do about this. You know, and to most people's, most people don't realize this or know this, it has never been against the law to walk up and down the street with an AR-15 strapped on your back, a shotgun in your hand, or a rifle, a .22 rifle. It has never been illegal in the state of Arkansas. The only thing that used to be restricted was a handgun. Hold on.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify, so what I have, I think I have heard you say that our only recourse to action then is what you're going to do with the sign, which I commend you, because I think that our only recourse to action is to simply shut the town down to them and make it unavailable to them, so that when they get here, they cannot eat, they cannot drink coffee, they cannot shop, they can't ride the trolley, they can't take a taxi, about all they can do is walk up and down the street.
And that's the personal choice of the individual who owns the property.
Okay, so what we really need to do then is have a PR campaign to get all of the business owners on our side on this, and to make it clear to them what our plan is if we decide to do this, and then get the word out. Because I think if we do this and do it effectively, and quite frankly, the PR opportunity here is a marketer's dream, but I'm not going to get into that unless you ask me. But what we can do then, we're taking point on this, we're showing other communities what they can do to counteract this, because we are being, we're doing this first, and they can see how effective it is. And if they don't show up, that's even better, because then we'll-
We will give, we will give property owners the opportunity to state whether or not they want the firearms to enter into their property.
And if they call you, then you will arrest these people.
If a person enters property that they have been denied access to, yes, then they have broken the law, and they would be arrested.
Okay.
The rest of it, and I have, you know, being police chief in this town for going on 19 years now, I've seen a lot of things that certain people don't like go on. This group likes it, this group doesn't. No matter what it may be, and my feelings don't matter, I have always found that if you just let them do it, get it out of their system, and basically ignore the fact that it's happening, don't give any rise to it, do not incite them, you know, that, a lot of these people are looking for reaction. No matter what the event may be, when they do it publicly, they're looking for a reaction. And if they fail to get that reaction, then it's an anticlimax, and they walk away.
But can I counter that with saying that if the public perception, the only way we have to make money in this town is with tourism. I mean, Fayetteville Rogers, they have other things that bring in income. And if we give, if we have a public perception that we are okay with this, that we're allowing this to happen, we're just ignoring it and letting people walk around with this open carry thing, then that will be interpreted by people outside of this town who aren't from around here, that this is not a safe place to go, because people are allowed to carry guns in that town. We don't have anything to do with it.
I think if you allow shop owners, et cetera, to put the signs up in their doors-
Okay.
And I think, of course, we're going to have a presence downtown-
Yeah.
During this event. And I think that the rest of it, if you just let it go, it's not, you're not saying you like it, you're not saying you want it, you're not even saying you tolerate it, you're just saying, "We understand you have the right to do what you're doing, and we can't stop you. Do it and leave."
Yeah, because this is not about anti-gun, which my email indicates that some of these people are trying to make this that we're opposed to guns. And we're not. I mean, we own guns, you know, but we just don't strap them around our hip and walk around town with them. And this is not an anti-gun thing. This is a marketing thing, because our marketing director has already stated, and it's a matter of public record, that our advertising plan for this town, which we intend to spend a half a million dollars on, is to advertise this town as a safe place, a peaceful place where people are friendly, where you can come here, have a great time, and make friends that you're going to have for the rest of your life. And this is absolutely counter to our marketing plans, so we just simply cannot allow this to happen.
Well, we, you, we, my officers, Detective Sebby over here, and the rest of them that work at the department, have every intention to keep it the safest place that people can come to.
Okay, but you need the cooperation of the public and the business owners to do that.
Well, you know-
Okay. I can buy that.
Okay, you said they couldn't go in the city parks, the city parking lot. Does that include trolleys?
Yes, it includes trolleys.
Okay, so, we're going to have a major situation in that regard. If they can't park in any of the city parking lots, and if they can't take the trolley, where are they going to-
Well, they can park in, they can, okay, the courthouse parking lot.
Okay, that's what I needed, okay.
It's the courthouse parking lot, not city parking lots, the courthouse parking lot.
Okay, that was clarification I needed, because otherwise, that in itself would be causing a problem.
Right, no, the courthouse parking lot, they cannot enter the courthouse, the police department, city parks, et cetera. And that's all well delineated in the state code book.
Okay, and how are they supposed to know?
They do.
Okay.
These people are very well-versed on the laws of the state.
So they will have to drive their car to park somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the signs will also go up in, I understand you can't go any place that serves alcohol too, but they also-
That is not accurate.
That's not accurate, okay.
They removed that portion as well. It was stricken. The entire portion that said, "Any person who carries a weapon into an establishment that sells alcohol, beverage, is guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a fine of not more than $2,500, or imprisonment for not more than one year or both," is completely stricken.
So those business owners now have to put that sign up too?
Correct.
Thank you.
We've got a real Nancy Pelosi on our hands here, don't we? You've got to pass the bill before you know what it says.
Unfortunately, that, maybe that's what happened. I don't know.
Joyce Singer.
Mr. Perkypile.
So, Mayor and Chief, there's not really anything, anything productive that this council can do at this meeting. We can't pass an ordinance, at most, we could pass a resolution saying, "Hey, we don't, we don't care for your concealed carry, I mean, your open carry, but we recognize your right as a second," something like that. We could pass a resolution. But we can't effectively pass anything that would affect these people and their ability to come to town.
That is accurate.
And perform.
That is accurate.
And this is what this is, it's a performance.
That is accurate.
They're looking for, as you said, they're looking for, they're looking for a reaction. They're looking for, you know, people to stand out and accost them verbally or whatever. I think, my opinion is, let them do it, let them get it out of their system, they'll check it off their list, and they'll move on.
I can tell you that, unknown to most of the people in this town, and apparently everybody at this table, we have had numerous visitors in town who have openly carried. We have had numerous visitors in this town who have openly carried. They just didn't announce the fact that they were coming, nobody really noticed that they- They just didn't announce the fact that they were coming, nobody really noticed that they were doing it, nobody paid much of, much attention, that they came and they went. Yes.
And that's, you know, we do have open carry evidently, and it's unfortunate that it was accidentally enacted, although some people were probably pushing in that manner. I took the initiative, I forget what day it was, Sunday, because I didn't want to be in the shops when I was busy on Saturday, from local flavor up to the Palace Bath House, and then down Main Street to the Grand Central, I got 150 signatures from shopkeepers and people working in shops. I had four people that refused to sign because they favored open carry. I talked to the shopkeepers that if we can't do anything, our fallback position is that you'll have to put signs in your windows saying, and I got the Arkansas laws verbiage visible from ten feet, the signs are already produced. So, you know.
We've already made the signs up, I mean, we, well, we didn't make them up?
I've got 120 of them.
Okay, well, now we've got a lot. Because we've had them for probably three months, I guess, something like that. But we were just waiting for the time to come-
Well, you show me yours, I'll show you mine.
All right, we'll do that. And understand that this law, when they passed it, didn't say Arkansas is an open carry state. It didn't legalize open carry, what it did is it didn't make open carry illegal. If that makes any sense. It didn't legalize, it didn't come out and say, "Open carry is legal in the state of Arkansas." It said that open carry is not illegal. There's no law against it.
And if you ask most people, they will be surprised that open carry is now okay in Arkansas.
Right.
One question. We're aiming this for this display, this performance, I like that word, on the 29th. Will, is it a recommendation, should we think that the business owners should consider leaving those signs up for thereafter?
That is their choice.
If that's their choice.
That is their choice. All of this is personal choice.
Thank you, I just wanted to be sure, personal choice, got it.
They'll get, they'll get passed out before that.
Yes, we're planning on passing them out this, next week, isn't it? Yes.
Do most of them wear one-gun or two-gun rigs? I'm just real curious.
Man, I don't know. I don't know, I want to know if my gun's bigger.
You want everybody to look at your gun, which is apparently why these people are coming here.
But we can do this, we can get through a peaceful, you know, and if we just go through it quietly, I think it'll pass, like most other things do, and be gone. You know, what I don't want to see is a total breakdown of peace and tranquility downtown.
I think you're going to see it on, you know, anybody I've talked to is part, you know, I've been around guns all my life, I shot competitive for a number of years, so no stranger to weapons. It just bothers me that you can now walk into a gun show and buy a pistol from an unlicensed dealer with no background checks or anything, and walk around with it on your hip. And I know that some people have strange ideas when it comes to weapons.
The Supreme Court just gave Chicago a really bad spanking for trying to restrict people's rights with firearms. I mean, they really spanked them. You know, the Supreme Court, the Ninth Judicial in California spanked them. You know, the higher courts are really coming down on the state and local jurisdictions that are what they feel is infringing upon people's Second Amendment rights. So it, you know, we move with caution.
Chief, you know, is there any limit to the number of weapons a person can carry on them?
It, I-
I mean, they can just load up.
You know, I can tell you from experience, from having carried a weapon, from the time I was in the Marine Corps all the way through the police department, they get heavy. So, I mean, I don't think they're going to want to carry too many.
I was just curious, that passed my, crossed my mind last night. I just don't see that this council meeting is going to be productive, other than it's sort of a PR thing.
It's informative, it's good, it's-
It's just a PR thing, so.
Okay, since the governor's conference, when this hit Monday night, my, and I actually knew about it before then, my initial gut reaction was, "Put up signs, don't let them in." Since then, I've had time to think, to talk with all kinds of people at all levels, to consider Eureka and the way we have handled these kind of issues before, issues meaning stuff we didn't want here, or we did want here that others did want or didn't want. First of all, you can't make an ordinance against an opinion, nor do you quote Wikipedia in law. That being said, you can't enforce something that is not the law. The biggest reason for this group coming in is they want the law clarified. They, because they think it's going to go to their side, they want to use us as their testing ground, so we can do something stupid, so they can cause a lawsuit that they, of course, on their side assume will win. At this point, who knows? But that's what they want to do. We've had the same thing with the AFA, we've had the same thing over gay rights, over the domestic partnership certificates, over all of this stuff. And what has Eureka always done? The vast majority of all Eureka, have we put up signs? No. Have we gone out and done stuff and said stuff? No, we have ignored them. The AFA is gone, the Jericho Riders, except for Kevin, are gone. Everything has gone smoothly, there have been no lawsuits, there have been no bodily harm. They have made their point for their one day or their one time period, we have ignored them. We are a tourist town. We welcome everyone, we do not pick and choose sides, we sure as hell don't sit there and tell people what their rights are, whether they're in our town or their town. We welcome everyone. When you start drawing the line on who you're going to welcome into your town, you are causing discrimination, which is my law specialty, and you can't do it, the city would be totally annihilated in that kind of a lawsuit. You cannot discriminate, you cannot pick and choose your rights. All we need to do is ignore them, treat them like anybody else. My biggest concern at the beginning was wackos, not the gun carriers, they are not going to cause an issue. That is to spur this thing from their mind, because it gives them negative PR. They want us to cause the issue. They want us to take steps, they want us to put up signs, they want us to pass an ordinance, because then they can nail us, and we get the bad PR, they get the good PR. If we ignore them, they're in here for a few hours, for one day, eventually, others may come back in, it doesn't matter, you ignore them. And as far as the tur- the majority of tourists who have been here before, and during spring break, that's an awful lot of them, are going to think it's another one of our quirky little events, and aren't going to think a whole lot about it. Others who have not been here, and whether they've researched us or not, are going to ask shop people, and we, yeah, they're proving one of their rights, and as long as there's no harm going on, we're ignoring them. They have the right to prove their rights. It's a no-brainer. You ignore them-
I have to answer that one.
I'm almost done. You simply ignore them, and they will go away. They're trying to use us, you know, that's the big thing. They're trying to use us for their side, in a very negative way. And I think if we do any kind of reaction, especially a gut reaction, we are asking for very bad PR. If we go our merry way, they'll go away, and life will continue as usual. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the mayor, and I'd like to thank the chief for showing up for this meeting. I was very concerned, because a lot of people feel threatened in this community by this action. This is not casual gun owners wearing a gun in public, this is a group trying to make a point-
Yeah.
And as far as I'm concerned, bully us in the process. And I will not be quiet, I was not quiet when the plan came to town, I was not quiet when Posse Comitatus came to town, and I will take a stand, because I believe that people have the right to peacefully go about their business here in Eureka Springs. This is a one-day event, and I will put up a sign in my window, and I will encourage every other shopkeeper in town, because we don't want this particular group of gun owners who are trying to rub our noses in it. These are not your average gun owners.
That's right.
This is a concerted group, that I won't go into the background there, but I just won't, there are some groups I will not stand, I will speak out, I will do everything in my power to keep them out of this community, and that is my right under the Constitution.
I'm with you, James.
Mr. McLown.
It's just the same thing, having that sign in the windows, no different than having a sign that says, "No shirt, no shoes, no service."
I have a cigar.
Mr. Mitchell.
And you're not discriminating if you put that sign in your window.
Mr. Mitchell.
No, that isn't, no.
Mr. Mitchell.
I think the police chief has outlined a remarkable response to this issue, and I applaud him and our city attorney and the mayor for their due diligence, and I would, and merchants have the option to do it or not do it. And so, therefore, it is left up to the will of the business owners and the people of this town to deal with it. Again, thank you, police chief.
Anybody else? Mr. Perkman.
Mr. Weaver, did you have an opinion or anything you wanted to interject into this conversation, sir?
I think the chief covered it very nicely. I think, I think he stated what the opinion is around the state, and what has went on other places, is that, as Councilman Snyder says, if you ignore them, they've been about a dozen other places in the state, they didn't get the reaction they're looking for, they're looking for somebody to give them the reaction they want, whether that's to put them on the front page of the newspaper, or whether that's to put them in front of a judge somewhere, so that they can cause more. I think the best thing the council can do is just what they're talking about, do it.
Mr. McLown.
Quietly respond and go on.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, was there any further discussion? If not, then, all in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned.